I will call this November 9th meeting of the Riverside Township Board of Trustees to order. Please rise and... Assessor, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Trustee Clark, would you call the roll?
Leanne Blau.
Trustee John Carroll.
Present.
Trustee Mary Rock Clark, present. Trustee Heilambocker. Heilambo.
Absent. Asked to be excused of illness.
Supervisor Wilt.
Present.
Clerk might drop.
Not available. So it looks like we do have a quorum. Three out of five voting members are present, so we can go forward. We have the minutes of the October 12th board meeting before us. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from 10:12, or 10:22, rather, 2022.
Okay. I have a motion by trustee Carroll, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the minutes of October 12th, 2022. Any discussion, any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion is carried. Then we have the minutes of the special meeting held on November 1st. And what is your pleasure on those minutes?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of November 1, 2022.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
I wrote the minutes, so I don't know if I...
And I will second, I can do that. So, yes, trustee Carroll moves. Supervisor Wilt seconds the approval of the minutes of November 1st. Are there any additions or corrections? I didn't see any. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you, by the way, trustee Clark, for taking the minutes tonight in the absence of our clerk. All right. Then are there any communications? I don't believe there was anything other than business before this meeting tonight, so we will move on. Public comments, does our assessor have anything for us?
Thank you. My name is Fran Sutkowicz, and I'm here as township assessor today. And it appears that the processes are moving smoothly through the Cook County Clerk's office, so that our property tax bills will be coming out soon, which means the Cook County Treasurer's Office will be getting enough data so that they can have at least the property tax amounts available online very soon. And once they have those property tax bills online, they will be able to be paid online. They'll come in the mail a few days later, but they will be online, I would say, very soon. Not going to commit to any days here, but it does look like the procedures are following, finally, flowing. And that's all I have. It looks like they will be due by the end of December, so people will be able to pay their property taxes by the end of the year for any tax write-offs. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
That's big news.
Thank you. You're welcome. And I think most of you are here about grants, but if there's anyone else of the public who has anything other than grant requests that they want to bring before this board, this would be the time to do so. Yes.
I'm here to talk about C4.
Oh.
Would you like me to...
You know what, we've got that further down on the agenda. If you don't mind, then I'll take that then. Okay? Great. Thank you. Yeah, we have it as item E of the new business, so if necessary, we'll move it up so you don't have to wait forever. Okay, anything else? Hearing nothing, then we'll move on to new business, and the first items are the grant requests. Everybody who applied for a grant was notified that there may be a delay in funding on these until funds are available, because we have not been receiving tax dollars. Therefore, all these presentations will be with that proviso. And the first one for consideration is the Presbyterian Church's Little Food Pantry. Is there someone here to speak to that? I see that you are requesting $5,000.
Thank you very much. I'm Lynda Nedkarney. I'm the Minister of Mission and Outreach at the Presbyterian Church. First, I want, of course, thank you for your support in the past, and again, for allowing us to apply again this evening. We have seen a huge increase in the Little Food Pantry in the last year, and I understand you are seeing the same thing here with the Township Food Pantry. Because of that, and because of the unique nature of the pantry in that it is open 24/7 without any need for anyone to register and let us know who they are and who they're feeding, we really weren't sure where that was coming from. So we decided to do some anonymous data research with people. So over the course of a month, we asked people to complete the information form only one time. They did do it with pen and paper, so it was easy to see that there was one person who did it twice based on their handwriting, but everyone else was a really unique identifier. We learned that the vast majority of the people are what we would classify or consider the working poor, so these are people who do have jobs. The huge increase was mostly because gas had gone up so tremendously. We discovered that we are feeding approximately 70, 7-0, people per day. So people come and they take enough food for, sometimes it was one person, sometimes it was a family of eight. We learned that of those 70 people, 90% identify 60546 as their zip code, and the rest are the surrounding communities. So that is the reason that we have asked for an increase from what you have generously provided in the past. And we are not only looking to you, but to the community to help us as well. We started and adopt the pantry program a few months ago. We have quite a few new volunteers, Sue here is with me as one of those. We have Riverside Foods now also providing food for us, donating food, and we have several people through this Adopt a Pantry program who are running some food drives. So we are looking to various sources to help us meet that need, not just the township. But we do very much appreciate the fact that we can come to you as well.
Okay. Trustees, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, supervisor.
Then what is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we accept and grant the grant request to the Little Food Pantry at the Riverside Presbyterian.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the request for a $5,000 grant to the Little Food Pantry at Riverside Presbyterian Church. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second, and this will be recorded as a roll call vote, so I can call the roll, so you can keep the track of it. And trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt? Yes. So that is carried. Congratulations. And please be patient, we'll get to you as soon as we have some money. Okay. Next request is from the North Riverside Public Library, and I see that there's some people to speak to this.
Hello.
Please identify yourself first.
Yes, yes. My name is Natalie Castillo Aguirre, and here with me is Karen Quinn. We are both from the North Riverside Public Library. I am the new Youth Services Manager. I'm excited to be here and to share all of the wonderful new updates that we have in mind for the Children's Department. We are hoping for a redesign of the Children's Department to be completed next year. This would include a sensory room, a baby garden for babies and guardians to have a safe space to play, and hopefully the inclusion of windows to have some sun. There would also be a complete rearrangement of materials and books to be more inclusive to families, preteens, and children. One of the most crucial elements to being successful in being more inclusive is through furniture. Right now, we have four child-sized wooden tables and chairs, one adult-sized table with chairs, and several one-seat cushion chairs, all of which are worn due to age. With this grant money, I would purchase a farmhouse table for the new tween area, which would give them a space in the library. It would also be a great space for people to read, write, create, and socialize. It would be a wonderful community space. I would also buy tables for the separate children's area. I would buy adult-sized tables and chairs in order to be more inclusive to families. There would also be extra soft seating stools for kids. For our baby garden and sensory room, I would purchase soft seating for adults and kids to sit for comfort or for play while enjoying the room. Ultimately, this furniture is necessary for our update. It would help my department to create a more conducive space for the wonderful community that we strive to serve. It would also allow us to provide better spaces for outside groups to use, like Girl Scout meetings, village storytimes, and field trips from schools, along, of course, with space to allow your organization for youth to strengthen our partnership.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I make a motion, we grant the North Riverside Public Library $4,000.
For furniture for the youth area. Okay. I have a motion to approve the grant requested of $4,000 to the North Riverside Public Library, and of course, you understand that that would be done via our purchasing directly for you.
That was my question, supervisor.
Yes, yes. Because it's another taxing body, we don't give money from one to the other, what we would do then is they give us the links to the purchases and we order that and pay for it.
I will second that motion, then supervisor.
Thank you. I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Carroll, to approve the grant to the North Riverside Public Library for $4,000. Is there any discussion or any other questions? Hearing none, then trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
And supervisor Wilt, votes yes. So that is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Wilt, before anybody leaves, has everybody signed in?
Yeah, please make sure that you're on the list, because the temporary clerk will have to utilize that for appropriate minutes. So thank you very much. All right. The next one for consideration is the Riverside Brookfield High School, request for $4,000 as well. Is there someone here from RB? Okay, so this one is for the Health Services Department, for the nurse's office, and they are looking for $4,000 for a, looks like a reception station, and a round table, and It follows the grant request, there's like pictures, do you have that?
I do.
Yes, okay.
Supervisor Wilt, can we defer this until we can have somebody here from the...
Sure. Is that a motion?
I'd like to make that motion, yes.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to defer this until we can have somebody to answer questions. And all in favor say aye.
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 Yes, aye, thank you.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried, we will defer that. Okay. The next grant request is from the Prairie Trail Federation, and I think we have someone here present about that. This request is for $1,000 for the Kiwachina and $1,000 for the Kachina.
Correct. Good evening, my name is Matthew Wolf. I'm here on behalf of the Prairie Trail Federation. There are two tribes that serve the greater Riverside, Riverside Township area. As you just said, it's the Kiwachina Tribe for boys and Kachina Tribe for girls. I would like to thank council first for their past support of the organization, and also like to thank you for your service. So this year, as in years past, I'm here seeking a grant for $2,000. We have approximately 30 families currently participating in the Kiwachina Boys Tribe, as well as probably about twice that number that participate in the Girls Tribe. The goal of the organization is to foster the bond between fathers and their respective sons and daughters. I personally have two sons, so Kiwachina is a little nearer and dearer to my heart, but I have a nine-year-old and an 11-year-old who recently graduated from the program. And it is typically from the children's age between kindergarten and fifth grade that we participate together. There are numerous events throughout the course of each year. There are three campouts, a fall, winter, and spring, that are all held at YMCA campgrounds. There are various kind of fun nights out, like haunted trails. We rent the scout cabin for monthly meetings in Riverside, do different things like Pinewood Derby, and just different arts and crafts. Additionally, we volunteer to sell Christmas trees at the La Grange YMCA, and then also participate in the Secret Santa Program, which is actually being held tonight, otherwise I would have a partner here with me. But the Secret Santa Program is each typically one dad from the tribe, we are assigned a number of children. And this year, to speak on behalf of Kiwachina, we received six children that have come from socioeconomic-challenged backgrounds, and so we receive a list and a budget. The budget is for the individual family to support, and we go to Target, and you know, with a list that is tailored to each child's wish list, so that enables them to really receive nice, it's typically between $130 and $150 of Christmas gifts for that year. So that's happening tonight. And then, so that is one thing that we have used the grant for in the past, is if we come up short with only five out of six children sponsored, maybe that the grant funds would be used to sponsor the remaining child. Similarly, in order for a family to participate in the Prairie Trail Federation program, we pay $150 a year, and that is, the vast majority of that is paid by each family. There are, however, we provide scholarships, though, to families that would not otherwise be able to participate. So that is really the use of the vast majority of the funds, is for the scholarships to allow underprivileged folks to participate, and then also to periodically, it's not even every year, to support a Secret Santa pledge. But I'd like to thank you for your support in the past, it's really a wonderful organization that provides a lifetime of memories with parents and their respective daughters and sons. So thank you.
Thank you. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve the grant request for Prairie Trail Federation in the amount of $2,000.
I have a motion by trustee Carroll, I'll second it. Supervisor Wilt?
I have a question.
Yes.
The Secret Santa Program, you said you had six children?
Yes.
Are they Riverside Township residents?
They generally are, yes.
Generally are?
Yeah, generally not exclusively, to be honest. We have, as far as membership itself, we have, we are all Riverside Township family members. We have one family that comes from Stickney, but we are otherwise exclusively Riverside and North Riverside.
But that is part of where you use the funds? The other is for basically a scholarship for a family to...
Yes.
...participate with you?
Correct.
And the, how do you get the names of the families, or how do you solicit those requests?
That is a very good question, and I apologize, I do not know. There is an organization that we have some affiliation with, and I'm terribly sorry to say I don't know the name of it, but they...
They provide...
They provide it on a larger scale, and so we end up as, Prairie Trail ends up with usually a dozen children per year.
But the recipients of your Secret Santa are predominantly local?
Predominantly local, yes.
All right. And when you said you get six, is it both tribes that are each...
We have six boys this year for Kiwachina, and a similar number for Kachina.
Okay, so it's really like 12 families that would be benefiting?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
The scholarships, are those for Riverside Township families?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
That's, our membership is exclusively.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve this $2,000 grant request. We'll do a roll call. Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt? Yes. All in favor. Okay, so that has been granted. The next one is the People Care request. There's additional material here, I don't know, I don't think that everything was copied, so if anybody wants to see the rest of that, the material, but we're somewhat familiar with your program, but please step up and give us a summary.
Good evening, I'm Judy Mantal, I'm the Executive Director of People Care, and I know the board is very familiar with us as a nonprofit organization. Since we're post-COVID, we are having a banner year. If everything continues on as it has been, we will provide over 2,000 services for our senior residents in Riverside Township, which we haven't served that many in the past four years collectively throughout the year. So our membership is growing. We just had seven new clients in the last 10 days, which is a record high for us in such a short period of time of senior citizens requiring services. We have a new, I hate to call it a program, but we have a new initiative that we are working on, and if someone, I won't name my name, would have finished her training, I would have been able to bring in Nala, our pet service dog that we have now working for People Care. And we have two volunteers, one board member that are service-trained with Nala, and I am in the process of completing my training with her. And what it means is we can bring Nala to our events, we can bring her to a seniors home for a friendly visit, and it's been very successful. We brought her up to the concert in the big ballpark, and People Care brought seniors there for the evening, and our board member Connor Waddell brought Nala up there, and she visited, Nala is a black lab and German Shepherd and Husky mix, she's a rescue dog, that she visited with all of our seniors, and it was a huge success. And the next day, two of my seniors called, one was a lady, she was kind of in tears because she can't have a dog anymore because of the apartment building she lives in, and she's always had dogs her whole life, and it was just wonderful for her to be able to sit there and pet Nala. And Nala was a trooper, and you know, kind of sucked up to her and put her head in her lap and everything like that, so she made it very successful. Nala's not actually going to cost us probably any money except to like resupply treats every now and then, and they're not real expensive, but that is a new program that we're bringing to our repertoire of everything else we do. Also, this last quarter, we had three people put in 91 hours of volunteer time to help a senior who unfortunately was a hoarder clean out her apartment, and we spent 91 hours doing that, and that speaks to how People Care treats their clients. We also took the initiative this year to raise our three employees, four employees, I'm sorry, salaries up to $15 per hour. And I know that's not going in effect in the state of Illinois until 2024, 2025, but we wanted to be proactive. Our people that man our phones are the first interaction that any client has with People Care. They do a phenomenal job, they have created friendships over the phone with these people, so we want to keep those people working for us. And obviously, people who work for nonprofits understand they're not going to make a lot of money. It's just, it kind of goes hand in hand, but we want our employees to know how much we appreciate them and how much work that they do do and they put in for our clients. We have, we're on track right now, we've provided over 141 meals for food insecure seniors, and I'm sorry, but we do bring people to your Little Food Pantry two or three times a week as we're out on rides with them, they ask to stop, so of course, we stop, and I do bring people here to the Riverside Food Pantry also. It's a little sad, because living in the area that we live in, we don't truly believe and see that people are food insecure, and it's hitting senior citizens particularly hard this past year. So we participate in that. And other than that, you know, we've already provided 1,500 services, we've got in more than 1,000 volunteer hours into it, and I predict if we stay on track that we're going to be upwards of 2,000 services per year, so that's what we've been doing in a nutshell for the last 10 months. Is there any questions?
Well, there is an increase, I recognize that you didn't have as many services available in 2021.
Right.
And I see that it's an increase, historically, it's been 10,000 a year, except in 2020, there was a little bump, and then back to 10,000 last year, and you were requesting 12.5.
Yes.
And that is...
To help cover that. And the only thing, like, I don't know if you really looked at our budget, the only line item we are over, what we guesstimated is, was our copying and printing, and that is primarily because we are, for the first time in, second time in the last five years, current with getting out our quarterly newsletter to everyone. We have, we don't, we can, but we don't do newsletters via email, because our senior citizens want the piece of paper in their hand. And we're sending out approximately 500 newsletters, and we also provide newsletters to the Scottish Home and to the British, to, uh, Kentada.
Kentada.
Old-school British Home.
Caladonia and Kentada.
Exactly, exactly, Caladonia. So even though people that live there are not our clients, we do service them, and we do have clients that live in both of those facilities, but not their whole residents are not all clients of ours.
Okay.
But we do provide them newsletters because they really enjoy them, and our little section of the newsletter where we do all the little brain teaser games is super, super popular.
Good brain exercise, yeah.
So, as a service, we provide them to them, so next year, we will readjust our budget for our printing costs.
Okay.
Supervisor Wilt, do we have a maximum we can grant in one year?
We reserve the right to limit, but we have not, we don't have the standard maximum, because we've exceeded what used to be the maximum for some police and fire and emergency services, so. I mean, it's up to this board, and we could limit how much we can give. Again, all of this is subject to availability of funds. So what is your pleasure?
I don't think it's based on inflation being over 9%, 12,500 is out of pocket at all. I happily make a motion to grant the grant amount of 12,500 to People Care for this year.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Carroll, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the $12,500 grant to People Care, Inc. this year. Any further discussion, or questions, or additions? Then trustee Carroll, what is your pleasure?
I make a motion to accept and vote aye.
You voted aye, okay. And trustee Clark?
Yes.
And supervisor Wilt says yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next one is the Riverside Community Garden.
Good evening, I'm Elaine Ragless, I am the President of the Riverside Community Garden.
Kristina Busa.
Ellen Rosenwink.
Other board members. Firstly, we want to thank you for your continued support of the Riverside Community Garden. This year, we used the funds to support our mission, which has threefold, to provide fresh produce to foods insecure individuals and families, and we've been seeing the same thing... And we've been seeing the same thing that the Riverside Township Food Pantry, the Presbyterian Pantry and People Care have seen that the, yes, we have People Care members that we provide food to, that the numbers have increased and we are seeing greater demand. So we have continued promoting food growing. So providing plants and seeds. And we create opportunities to build community within local organizations. So one of the things we've done new this year is create a harvest share program. This is kind of like a CSA where people sign up. And every time we harvest, we then deliver food to them. We have People Care members. Additionally, we have worked with the Riverside, the Presbyterian Food Pantry, Meals Do Matter, the Fifth Sunday Project, Riverside Area Refugee Settlement. And we've provided fresh produce to all of those. We are this year going to be expanding the garden. So our host Lutheran Ascension Church has provided an additional 300 square feet. So we're going to be building an additional, probably six raised beds, adding soil, compost, the beds, the mulch, the plants, the seeds. This will significantly allow us to increase the number of people we can serve with fresh produce. We're also going to use the funds to continue operating our existing beds to expand and maintain our community composting initiative, which we installed this year, which was six vermicose compost sub pods, which allowed us to compost over 3,000 pounds of community compost, where people in the community brought their own kitchen waste composted in the garden. We are also going to continue supporting our little free seed library, which allowed us to distribute 500 free seed packets. We've expanded that by also moving it to the Riverside Library for the winter so that people can continue having access to that. And we will continue providing education and events and expanding our children's resources by having fairy gardens, teepees, strawberry towers in the garden. Any questions?
I, I have one. So am I right in saying that this expansion of the community beds will increase produce, obviously that would go to serve these food insecure folks?
Exactly.
Fresh from, in the neighborhood goes out to folks in, in the neighborhood?
Yes, so all the produce that is grown is donated back to people who need it in the neighborhood through many different channels.
Yeah, I see on, on your page here. That, thank you, I, sometimes I just need clarity. Thank you.
When are you going to start this work?
Well, depends on funding and weather. So if we had the funding and the weather was good, we might start it right away. And if we can't do that before winter starts, then once the weather clears in the spring. And that's partly why we're coming to you now versus in February, so that we could possibly start the work if we had the funds.
And you said you have seen an uptick?
We have.
And is that based on the, the refugees coming into the state? Or is that just, that's just a small part of it or?
Well, not, we haven't seen an uptick.
I'm talking about the ones that are, that are being shipped in from our southern friends.
Yes, so that hasn't impacted us.
Okay.
We have really-
It has or has not?
Not that we know, not that we know. We have, we are serving the people inside our community. So it's the people who come to our events, who have signed up for the Harvest Share, who are receiving meals through Meals Do Matter, who we work with through People Care. And we also provide any extra produce to the Presbyterian Food Pantry, which is again, getting picked up every day.
So were we to receive some of those folks from down south? We, this money would help perhaps address, giving, addressing their food insecurity as well? Should they start coming to our, instead of Schaumburg, I think where they've been going in Deerfield?
If they were in our community, perhaps, but-
I, I think he's asking this because on the first page you say, provide fresh produce to the Riverside Area Refugee Resettlement.
Right.
So that is a program that is through Riverside Presbyterian Church. They maybe, she can speak to it.
Riverside Area Refugee Resettlement Team is about 200 people from the Riverside community who are working to help resettle refugees. They do not live locally. They live in communities in the city where there are people who are also from their same country. But when, whenever we receive a family, we provide them with a month's worth of groceries because they don't have any means by which to get groceries once they arrive. And so they provided all the, a lot of the fresh produce for us.
For your program?
For that program.
For those folks?
For those folks, yeah.
And it's just the first month, right?
Correct.
That we do the-
Right, we just do groceries for a month.
So it's just a housewarming kind of thing?
Yes.
Exactly.
Okay, I did notice, and you did explain that you want to get started on this earlier because we've already granted 3,500 this year. Because you usually come in the early part of the year rather than-
So that was our 2022 gardening season and this would be 2023 funds.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the grant to Riverside Township Community Garden in the amount of 5,000?
Yes, 5,000, it's on page four.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to grant $5,000 to the Riverside Community Garden. And if there's no further questions or discussion, I will call the roll. Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Again, subject to funds availability. Okay. The next item is Riverside TV.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Colin Hughes. I am the Chairperson of the Riverside TV Commission for the Village of Riverside. I'm coming to you today for a grant request to digitize our rather vast VHS archive that we currently have in bins in our office in the community center. Attached to the grant was a spreadsheet of all of the VHS tapes that we have. It's just under 200, 198 I believe. And each tape contains between an hour to three hours of programming from when Riverside TV was started as a community organization in 1996 through roughly 2008, which is when we started switching to DVDs and digital. All of these programs were events that occurred in and around the township or in the township and around Riverside. We have a lot of old township meetings, old village meetings, but then we also have a lot more evergreen content like when the governor came to North Riverside in the early 2000s to award the money for the new water tower in North Riverside that, that serves us today. Other events such as the old holiday concerts that the township put on, Memorial Days, pretty much every event from the area. We, we covered it for, for, for the village. These VHS tapes aren't getting any better as far as quality goes. And we've been trying to figure out the best way to handle it for a while now. And it's, we don't have the equipment to handle mass digitization of tapes in a cost-effective way. We have one VHS player that we can, can utilize. It's not a particularly great VHS player either. So going out to a company, which is what we're asking for, funds to, to pay a, a company that specializes in this, they can do it in a much more cost-effective way than having one person put in a tape, sit there for three hours and then switch out and put it in the next tape because they can do, you know, multiple tapes at the same time. And that quote is attached to the grant request.
And this digitization would be, your intent is to post it to the YouTube channel and that is a marrying codec that they'll, they'll accept?
Yes, yeah, so, so they are digitizing to the H.264 codec, which is, is web ready. The, the digitization process is, is just the first leg. Once we get these files back, we will have a staff member review them, make sure that the quality of the digitization was good, see what we actually have. Because for a lot of these tapes, you know, a lot of them were labeled, but, but a fair amount of them weren't. So we have to figure out what's on there and, and, you know, package it appropriately and-
With dates and things like that?
All that good stuff, yeah, exactly. Sometimes on these VHS tapes, you know, they would shoot a, like a program at the very beginning to show what the event was and then get into it. So we might have to do a little bit of editing just for it to, to be, you know, viewer ready. But yeah, we're, we're, we're looking forward to expanding our, our online archive to, to our full breadth of, of content.
How many YouTube viewers do you get?
Ooh, good question. It's been a minute since we've seen, since I've seen the hard numbers. But obviously for stuff like board meetings, little less, little less on the views. But as, as great as they are. But the special events like the Holiday Stroll and Lecture Series and, and that, we regularly see 100 to 200 views in the first year of, of it being posted. And it goes up over time.
It does go up over time?
Oh, yeah, yeah, as people find it. One of the most popular series of videos we have is when Hoffman Dam was removed. We just sent out a team with a camera and, and put it on the bridge. And those have like 12,000 views. You know, people will just load it up and, and watch the dam get demolished over and over again.
Yeah, you're going to get one more because I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, you knew this town that, we'll, we'll explain. There used to be dams, the big dam and the little dam. And so they took, when the big dam was by the Lions Hoffman Tower and they demolished it so the fish could spawn downstream.
Yeah, you're getting a couple more video watches on it.
So, so, so- The really exciting part is with this digitization, we'll have a companion piece of when the dam was refurbished. And they, there was a, I believe in 98, 99. They did a lot of renovations to the dam because it was falling apart ironically. You know, 15 years later, they decided to knock it down themselves.
And when they knocked it down, John, they found old rubber tires that, that's what had been used to fill it up. Those old rubber tires. That I find interesting.
Yeah.
And I actually was there in person to watch that, but-
I think that was actually the first video we posted on our YouTube was the dam getting knocked down.
People love to see things implode.
It's youtube.com slash, oh God, our, help me out guys, Riverside, our Net6? Believe it's-
If you look up Riverside TV, it's not the California one.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're not the California Riverside TV, but I believe it's youtube.com slash Net6 because we used to be Network 6.
Okay.
But my question is, like the tax meeting from 219, 2001? Does that get a lot, I mean, is that really necessary to archive?
Sure, fair question. We are getting bulk pricing because we are right around 200 VHS tapes. So there are certainly probably a few tapes that we could exclude. But we would then lose bulk pricing on the rest of them. And it would end up being more money than to-
So it's cheaper to just get them all done?
Just get them all done and then we don't have, and, you know, we might not actually ever even post it. But then we have it digitized and we can get rid of the VHS tapes that are taking up floor space.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve the grant in the amount of $2,292 to Riverside TV.
Second. I have a motion by trustee Carol, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the $2,292 grant to Riverside TV for digitizing of VHS tapes.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any, any other questions or comments? Then I will call the roll. Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt, yes. Motion is carried. Okay. Thank you. And we'll be in touch.
Supervisor Wilt, do we want to move?
Items E?
E up, so.
Thank you, I was going to suggest that. So we have item E of new business, cross, across community climate collaborative. That's quite the alliterative. That's why you called C4. Okay, yes, tell us a little bit about this.
Okay, I am Riverside Village Trustee Kristen Evans. And I want, I'm here today to talk, to talk about the C4 program. We're creating a sustainability team and so I wanted to tell you a little bit about it. Riverside is one of many municipalities in Western Cook County that has entered into the C4 memorandum of understanding, which is aimed at working together across income lines to achieve agreed upon greenhouse gas emission reductions, equity and sustainability goals. You may recall being surveyed recently to help determine the village's sustainability capacity or our ability to maintain sustainability strategy and programs over time. The results showed that 50% of all partner municipalities, including ours, self-reported as moderately prepared, while 37% consider themselves at entry level and only 13% reported having advanced capacity. I'm here to, today to invite Riverside Township to join Riverside C4 Sustainability Team, which will respond, which will be responsible for driving sustainability conversations within our community. Each C4 partner, including the Village of Riverside, is tasked with creating a core sustainability team. The, this team will manage a local, strategic and shared implementation process to consider the following six priorities, which are place, which includes housing, preservation and community development; prosperity, which is workforce and economic development; health and wellbeing, which includes food, mental and physical health; connectivity, which we, of course, internet and transportation; living infrastructure of ecology and environment; and resource conservation, which would include utilities and waste management. Sustainability teams will develop a roadmap aligned to the community's chosen four goals. So to make a meaningful difference, we need to approach our participation as a community involving the key stakeholders such as the township, schools, the library, community organizations, including like the farmer's market, in the strategic and shared implementation process. So it's not just a municipal effort, it's a true community effort. We would like to invite a township board member to join the team as the health and wellbeing representative. As extreme weather and worsening air quality tend to impact our vulnerable populations disproportionately and so many of the township's program, programs focus on helping these groups, your leadership on sustainability team, health and wellbeing initiatives would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
So my question is ultimately, I mean, what do you envision actually happening from this group? I mean, I, I've read that material and I understand everybody wants to meet together to figure out what to do. Do you have any vision for how anything would be implemented? Or if it's going to be kind of holding each other to task, to, to do things? Do you have a sense for that?
Well, this is what it looks like now. It's our sustainability team, which will have a representative that covers each one of the priorities. And then our first meeting would be in December, which would be open to about 50 residents that said they would be interested in, they're interested in sustainability on the surveys. And the, of course, the team. And it would just be like a brainstorming- session, which maybe would provide some direction to the priority groups, the sustainability team groups. And then there are consultants that are working with C4 to help us with our communication, you know, with our community group efforts, to help us communicate what our, what our needs are, and what, and what, how our initiative, we can build initiatives to meet those needs. So I don't know what it's going to look like, it's, it's something that we haven't done before.
That's what the whole thing is about, right? Trying to figure out what your initiative is actually going to be.
It's a pretty big project.
Are there other communities in the township that have gotten involved? Is North Riverside, or Brookfield, or Lyons involved? I know, I saw among the, the leadership that we're looking at Broadview, River Forest, and Oak Park, are there other communities that you're aware of that are involved locally?
Yes, North Riverside is involved, as is Brookfield. Berwin, I mean, there's several. Do you want me to read the list?
No, no, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I, obviously, as a township, I'd like to see that the whole township is getting involved, and not just, just one community.
Right. And each of these communities also will be creating their own sustainability teams. So Berwin and North Riverside should be doing the same thing, and we're all supposed to have our teams in place by the 14th of this month.
Of November?
Yeah, we're moving, trying to move fast.
Okay. I have, Trustee Clark, for your information, for the information of others, reached out if we were to go forward with this, if Trustee Carol would be interested in being the liaison for the township to this, and he has indicated that...
I'd be more than happy to. Sustainability is a big issue, obviously, for everybody on this planet, so I'm, I'm more than happy to volunteer.
Thank you.
For this program.
So, I mean, do you need a formal acceptance from an, from a...
No, I think I'll just follow up with an email.
Yeah, I double dog swear, I volunteer.
I was gonna hold you to it. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you very much. I don't know if we need to make a formal motion to get involved in this, to at least support Trustee Carol in his efforts to communicate with him.
Doesn't hurt to do it if you want to just make a, a motion to appoint Trustee Carol as the liaison to this organization, I think that's enough for now.
Can I vote for me?
Yes.
Then I move, I move to appoint Trustee John Carroll as the Riverside Township liaison to the Cross-Community Climate Collaborative, also known as C4. Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried, and that was an aye as well for me. You're welcome, thank you. All righty. Then we will double back to item B in the, under new business, and if I can find all my notes, that would be helpful. So you have a proposed calendar of meeting dates. The conflict that has caused us to have to do Wednesday meetings should be resolved in the coming new year, so we're looking to go back to second Tuesday of the month, board meetings, and that would be throughout the year, second Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM, and the, let me see, and then we are also, we also show the, the proposed calendar of holidays, which would include the same dates, the same holidays as we honored in 2022. Most of them are national or state holidays, and they're, they're kind of distributed, other than November, there's pretty much one or maximum two a month. And then the other item would then also be, we have the alternative of keeping it to Wednesdays, except in April, that would have to be, or we would have two meetings that month if we didn't combine them, because by law, the annual town meeting is held on the second Tuesday of April, so we would always have to have at least that portion of our meeting, and, but...
And that's why it's in black, Supervisor Wilt?
That's why it's in black, but I would propose that we do go back to Tuesday meetings, and so that would be that particular day, that particular sheet, and then the other one would be the township calendar of committee of the whole. We, our practice has been to place them on the calendar, and then if there's no need for the meeting, then it's easier to cancel than to post a committee of the whole meeting. So what is your pleasure? Would you like to adopt that calendar with the Tuesday meetings of the board, those holidays, and the first Tuesday committee of the whole meetings? I would move that we adopt that calendar.
I, I will second that, Supervisor Wilt.
Is there any discussion?
So we're, we're adopting the Tu, the second Tuesday?
The second Tuesday.
Yep.
And then the second Wednesday would be the committee of the whole?
No, the first Tuesday would be committee of the whole. The, the sheet with the items in red was an alternative, which would be like what we've done this year, but I don't expect to have the same conflict going forward that we had for, for Tuesday meetings, so this would mean that all of our meetings would be on the second Tuesday, including the annual meeting.
And, and the committee would be before those?
It's, it would be the week before.
The week before, okay.
Week before, yes. So, right now, we are scheduled on the first Tuesday for committee of the whole, and second Wednesday, second Wednesday we had been doing this year...
This would be second Tuesday.
But this would be second Tuesday.
Excellent.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to adopt the second Tuesday calendar of meetings, the holidays that are listed below it, and the first Tuesday of the month as, committee of the whole meetings as needed. I have a motion and a second, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
Wait a minute, who seconded that?
I moved and John seconded. Thank you. All right, then we have the holiday stroll. The, the committee is really having a lot more going on this time on this side of the tracks. So we have traditionally, before COVID, we traditionally had the school choirs upstairs in the auditorium singing, followed by usually a magician act, and that was ongoing. To do that this year would be $475, which is the same as we have paid in the past for the entertainment as well. I was a little concerned because we're kind of off the beaten path, but I was assured that this year Santa is going to be at the library, and First American Bank across the street is going to have some arts and crafts. So there will be more activity on this side, so people don't have to go way out of their way to come here for the program. Because typically, we had a big crowd for the choirs, and then it kind of thinned out, but if Santa's here, I'm sure that we'll have more visitors. So I would recommend, and I would move that we participate in the holiday stroll, we've already reserved the auditorium for them for that evening, and that we pay for the magician, as we have in past years, at the amount of $475. And there, there's a possibility, if they get enough other grants of support, that they would also have a balloon artist here for, to make balloon animals and things for children. So we will see how that will work out, but, as I said, I move that we support this by granting the use of the auditorium, as well as provide the $475 for a magician.
Do you need a second?
Yes, please.
I will second that.
I have a motion and second to participate in that way in the Riverside Holiday Stroll. Do I hear, we have a second. Any discussion? Then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supervisor Wilt, shouldn't that be a roll call, because it's money?
That's, you're absolutely right. So, Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
So motion is carried. Thank you. The next item is the short-term emergency financing via tax anticipation warrants. We have discussed, this is just in case the taxes don't come through, or we have higher bills than, as that starts trickling in, so it's kind of an emergency measure. The actual ordinance is in your packets, and I would move that we adopt ordinance number 2022-1, which is an ordinance authorizing the issuance not to exceed $200,000 tax anticipation warrants in anticipation of the collection of taxes levied for the year 2021 by Riverside Township, Cook County, Cook County, Illinois, for general corporate and mental health purposes, and authorizing the sale of said warrants to the purchaser thereof. The rest of the language is there for you. As I said, I make that a motion that we adopt that ordinance. Do I hear a second?
You do have a second, Supervisor Wilt.
I have a second from Trustee Carol, and is there any discussion?
So this is, Supervisor Wilt, this is just to make sure that the services we give, especially to our most vulnerable, will be protected if we don't get those tax funds on time, we can continue serving our public.
Absolutely. Thank you. Very well played.
Short-term borrowing against the expected property taxes that have been delayed, correct?
And the alternative to that would be, those folks that need our help would have to wait until the tax came in?
Correct.
Okay.
Or, or if you had some other emergency, you know, if, and as the winter approaches and...
Yeah, that's an enthusiastic second.
The heat goes out, or something like that, but now you have cash on hand if you need it.
Right. And we don't have to draw the full $200,000, in my understanding. We have, we will be working out the rest of the paperwork with the bank, but we would be utilizing our regular bank for the process, and there is apparently, our bond council has, has some interested parties for purchasing those warrants if we, if we implement them.
Correct.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Then hearing none, I will call roll call. Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilt? Yes. Motion is carried. All right, we've already covered item E. Most of my report has already been covered, but let me see, let me just, okay, so the, the ordinance we've already dealt with. Assistance, we've been talking about a, a great deal of need lately, so assistance continues to run at a relatively high rate of inquiry. There were some people who came off of general assistance, and one who almost came back and then got employment at the very last moment to avoid the need. There were three emergency assistance cases approved since our last meeting, and two of them related to the North Riverside apartment building fire, and the subsequent condemnation of that building, so they had to find other housing and needed first rent and a security deposit, so I was able to help with that for two, two individuals from that building. And there were some other inquiries, but so far, they haven't followed through. The food pantry also, it's not only been busy, but it's become much more expensive to stock with the rising prices of food, and, as I said, the higher utilization. So we have not provided any holiday gift cards yet. We usually give a gift card at Thanksgiving and Christmas. So later on, we have on the agenda that question, and we need to think about what we can do. Of course, we're now getting some backup funding. So far, we have had a few people come in for their November food pantry, and a couple of them have inquired if we're going to be giving them, and we asked them to check back later, that we don't know yet. And then, let's see, we've covered the holiday stroll, we'll talk about the bridge later, but I did get some answers to the questions that were raised at our meeting last week about that, and then in terms of, yeah, everything else is, is things that we will be dealing with on the agenda, but I also wanted to tell you that from the class of our Monday, Wednesday, Friday senior exercise class, there was, one of the participants found very fascinating stories among those seniors, and she took it upon herself to create a questionnaire for, for a number of those seniors, and take their pictures and create a calendar. That calendar is, she approached then, she wanted it to go for a charitable cause, a senior cause, actually, and after I gave her some of the organizations that we work with, with seniors, she chose Aging Care Connections. There was a little bit of miscommunication, and she thought that they had offered to pay for the printing and then take the rest of the, the money from there. That was not their intent, and she was ready to go to press, so I agreed to, that the township would advance the, the cost, and actually, she was given a quote and thought she was going to have to charge probably $15 or $20 for the calendar, because the cost of it was going to be about $9 apiece. When she went back to the printer to order 75 copies of that calendar, the price had dropped considerably, they, they did not charge as much, and so I just want you to know that I did, among the warrants, you will find a charge to Miniman Press for $637.50, and that is for 75 of those calendars, and as the money is returned, if we need to print more, we didn't want to overprint it, it's kind of a, perhaps a limited audience, but it's very interesting. There are some nice stories about some of our own, very own local seniors, and inspiration to others. So, a copy of that calendar is available both at the library, through participants in the exercise class, and in our office, so $10 only for that lovely calendar of local people and their stories. That's all I have to report at this time. Trustee Clark, do you have anything for us?
Just, yeah, I just have one comment about the calendar. Joanne Cozy, who writes Cozy Corner, will be doing, is making her article in the landmark, I believe, next week on the calendars.
Yes.
So my only report is senior exercise classes still going very well, and I'll, starting on Sunday, I'll be attending the Illinois Township Officials Meeting in Springfield, and they will be paying my expenses.
Oh, because of the board that you serve on?
Because I serve on the state board, yes.
Very good. Thank you, thank you for representing us.
You gonna be down there for veto session?
No, it has nothing to do with veto session.
Okay, thank you very much. Trustee Carol, do you have anything to report?
Nothing, but hopefully I will with C4.
Very good, very good. And then we do, in terms of Trustee Hylandbach, who wasn't able to be here tonight, the entire packet of information from the Mental Health Board is there for your perusal, so I'm sure that if you have any questions about, about that, he would be happy to answer those, those questions. We are moving on to unfinished business, the swinging bridge repairs. We do have a, a bid, one valid bid, we discussed it, and we had some questions after our meeting about that bid and how some of those items would operate. And I have, I have notes. So the questions that we had were actually posed to the contractor who bid, and both he and the architect are available by phone tonight if we have additional questions, but our concerns were, one, whether it's too late in the year, perhaps, to start the process, and for one, the contractor assured us that there's an alternative method for colder weather that he could utilize, and so that it is still possible to do it this fall. However, there... However, there, we also were concerned, well, what if we delayed it, because we're uncomfortable with it, if we delayed it until spring? And the good news is, there would be no, no additional charge, there would be no increase in price to do it in the spring. So, let me see, he said, in regards to the cold weather, there would be no price change on that either, if it were to be the alternative method. He said that on i jobs, they normally have the paint tested in Springfield per the i dot standard, but in this case, with system five, which would be the alternative system, we wouldn't have the material tested. We, we had asked, given the weather is getting colder, is it still feasible to start work on the bridge now, or will it need to wait till spring? And he said, we can still perform the work this fall or early winter, we would have to switch to i dot system five MCU, all Greek to me. If we wait until spring, no changes to the bid price.
Okay.
What kind of pricing exceptions might occur, because we were concerned with that, they don't foresee any issues. And then, we said, what was the invoicing procedure? That was a question. And monthly was fine on a percent complete basis, as we discussed, and net 30 days is standard. We asked if, about the six days to come to an agreement, and we were concerned whether there's enough time to do that, and they said, six days is fine, but they're flexible, they'll work with us if we need more than that. We questioned whether the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, or the DNR, or both, if there would be some permits required for this project, since we're looking at lead paint removal over a waterway. His response was negative. Owner will just need an IL EPA generator number, and I don't know what that is, but he said, our disposal contractor, EQ of Illinois, can assist Riverside if they do not currently have one, which we do not, so...
And what does he say, that we don't have a what?
If we don't have an, an IL EPA, an Illinois EPA generator number.
I don't know.
I don't know what that is.
I do not want to incur the wrath of Water Rec and the stable of attorney.
No, I do not, I do not either, so we would make sure that he, he helps us make sure we're in compliance when we get down to the actual contracting.
It was good to ask, and the answer seems to be, though, he's fairly certain, whether he's right or not, I guess is...
That's, that's it.
Illinois EPA files a complaint, the Attorney General's Office would be the one prosecuting that complaint.
And then you'd have to recuse yourself.
Yeah, just to be fully out there, we're fairly rigorous in that arena, so...
Okay.
We, putting back my Attorney General hat on, we're pretty, fairly rigorous, I'll take it off now and be like, let's not join my office into that.
The question didn't seem to surprise him, though.
Right, he didn't seem...
He seemed certain in the answer, I wasn't part of the call or the, but...
Right, yeah, no, I wasn't part, on this call, this was, this was actually done by emails back and forth between the, between our consulting firm and him. Will just need an Illinois EPA generator number, so, I don't know. And they have it, their disposal contractor, EQ of Illinois, is apparently who will take care of that disposal and assure...
Really more of collection that I'm worried about, I don't want it drifting into the, into the river, but, okay.
Yeah. Well, if that's their disposal contractor, I presume that that's what they do.
God bless them, but we're going to hold them to that, so...
Okay. Sounds good. And then he was willing to speak to us tonight if necessary, so if you want, I can get a call out to Ken, who can put us on a conference call, if, if you need more discussion of that. Otherwise, it would be, it, this would be the time to go forward in accepting the bid if you're so, you're so ready to do that.
I'll make a motion to accept that bid Supervisor Wilt.
I have a motion to accept the bid, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, and I think it was eight hundred and thirty-three dollars, something in that range.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Carol, second by Trustee Clark, to accept the bid. Do you want any, do you want them to go forward with it now? Do we want to wait until spring?
Should we do a plus or minus 10% on that? Or...
In terms of a maximum amount to spend on the project?
Yes.
Certainly within your discretion to do that.
It's typically what we do on big, big projects.
Yeah, big things, so...
And if I can put my Trustee Highlandbach hat on, he's, he was worried about it being paused if they didn't complete it.
In mid, midstream.
If they completed part of it, and then hard winter hits, and they have to wait till spring. I don't have any problem waiting till spring to allay his concerns.
Yeah, at this point, I don't think that there's going to be any more deterioration marked.
Yeah, I would agree.
And if it's not as urgent to enter into the actual contract after you accept the bid, that allows some time to continue to look into some of these other issues, I suppose, as well.
Okay. So, I would, would you recommend a modification to, to the...
Not to the motion, but, well, to, if you're thinking the spring start instead of a...
I'm thinking spring, because that would allay Supervisor, or not Supervisor, a Trustee Highlandbach's concerns, and if it doesn't affect us monetarily, I don't see the public getting upset over waiting for the repairs.
To do it, right.
I think that's the upside, and then in addition to putting whatever financing in place between now and...
Well, that's the other, that would be a major concern, when you're not rushing into it.
I would say spring, yeah.
Okay.
As long as it's not a need.
And you accept that modification to the motion?
I do, I accept the modification that we're going to start in spring.
Okay.
But are we still doing plus or minus 10%?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, right?
Okay. So then, I will restate, as I understand your motion, is that we accept the bid as presented. Want to get the name of the organization correct? Oh geez, sorry. I had it in my notes, and all my notes are all over the place. So, too many things here tonight. So, to accept the $433,000 bid that we received on time, to limit it to plus or minus 10% of that bid amount, and to request that, in the contracting process, that we request the, the work be done in spring.
I, I will...
Is that, does that summarize the motion?
That is an accurate representation of my motion, yes Supervisor.
Thank you. And so I had a motion, and that second, you approved that?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion and second, to award the bid to the, to the only bidder in the, with a limitation of 10% plus or minus, and for the work to be done in the spring. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt says yes, and motion is carried. And then the financing, then we will work through that if we're going till spring, and we have already started some preliminary discussion with Vincent Kankar and his, and our general counsel as well, to...
The general obligation bonds, potentially alternate, what was it, alternate revenue source, so you're not, you're not extending additional taxes unless you have to.
All right.
He believed that the finances were such, you should be able to pay this off over maybe a few years, or five or six years, but they wouldn't be necessary to extend any additional taxes, so.
Okay.
Those are there as a backup if you need, if you need to, but that's the, the gist or benefit of these types of bonds.
Okay. Thank you.
That's what he had in terms of broad strokes, and thought that would be an advisable way to look into financing the project.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Then we will, we will continue to deal with that, and I will let our consultants know that we can go ahead and start putting together the contract on that bid. Item B under unfinished business is the purchase of holiday gift cards for food pantry recipients. We have, in the past, well, last year, we did 40 gift cards at $45 each to, for the food pantry recipients in November, for a total of $1,800. And for Christmas, we did 30 gift cards, for some reason, we got fewer people, and also, those were at $50 each for $1,500. The, let's see, the only concern I have on this is that our participation in the food pantry has been greater than 40 and 30 people. I don't know how many will actually come in in these given months. I think that the vouchers for the farmer's market actually bring in some people that otherwise don't take an interest in our, in our food pantry, but I could be wrong. We currently are at around 70 or more people total that have taken part this year. Typically, we, we had an average of about 40, and they don't all come every month, but over the last six months, let's say there's been like 70 people who came, and I think it's been 80 since the beginning of the year.
So, we're talking about handing out 80 gift cards, positively 80 gift cards for Thanksgiving and 80 gift cards for Christmas, and...
So we're looking at $8,000 between the two?
And we don't have, really have that in our budget, do we?
Well, not really, not truly that much for food pantry. I mean, we've been, we have been still within budget, but we're almost maxed out, and we're only seven months into the fiscal year. So, we might want to skip one and just do them at Christmas?
Skip Thanksgiving, and do, and then do, so 50 cards at $80, or 80 cards?
80 cards at $50, so that would be 4,000, let's say.
Um...
No, you're right.
Yeah. And again, I don't anticipate all 80 would come in, that would be the potential, and I would...
And they don't expire, so if we don't use them, we can take them over to...
Correct, right, we could, we could hold them, we could hold them over, or I could use them to shop for the pantry, that's the other thing.
Right.
So do what, so do we need a motion then to skip Thanksgiving this year and just...
Well, we have nothing, there's, I mean, it's been a practice, but every year, we move to choose, you know, to approve what we're going to give when, so...
So I make a motion that we give out the Christmas gift cards of $50, some for Riverside Foods and some for Aldi? So if we have 80 people, 40, 40 for Riverside Foods and 40 for Aldi, or...
We can do that, whatever your pleasure. Yeah, at Christmas last year, we did more Riverside Foods, we did about equal on Riverside Foods and, and Aldi at Thanksgiving last year, so... So your motion is for $50 in December for the holidays, or simply giving one, one card for the holidays?
One card for the holidays, yep. And so, of $50, to either Riverside Foods or Aldi, then get to choose?
Okay.
So when then are we going to give those out? Would that be given now, starting in December?
And we could start giving them now, and just simply keep track and say they are holiday gift cards, start giving them now in, you know, this, this week. Actually, it'll probably happen next week, because we only have one day left this week, Friday's a holiday, so, and I have to go purchase these first, so, I would say that, yeah, we could start giving them out next week, and just tell them that's one holiday card, to enjoy it, you know, that they're going to get one now, and they can use it now or at Christmas.
Does it, does it cost us anything to buy the cards?
There's no fee, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
No, it's a straight $50.
So do we, well, what would happen if we did a $25 gift card at Thanksgiving and a $25 at Christmas? Is that too much, too much, or...
Um...
We're going to give 50 total?
You know, it really, I mean, it would be, it would be given over about five weeks, because, you know, truly, we've got, what, another full week before Thanksgiving week, and then, you know, by Christmas time, people are, are not really coming in. I think a $25 gift card may be kind of small, and the cost, the cost of, of food these days, I would say a $50 card and use it now, or use it at Christmas, however you want, you can use it whenever.
That's, that's fun.
Is that...
Yeah, that's, yeah, $150 gift card for the holidays.
And we're going to do 80 of those?
Well, I, I usually purchase them as I see the, the need is there.
Okay.
I will, you know, I mean, as I said, we have 70 to 80 people total that have been coming in this year, they don't all come all the time, so I would probably purchase maybe 50 of them and go from there.
So, up to 80, or up to, or do we just put for the recipients?
So, we keep track of when people come, so when they get a gift card, we mark it.
Yeah.
So if they get one now, they won't get one next month, if they don't come this month, and then come next month, you know, they'll get one. Is that, am I understanding your question?
Um...
Oh, up to, oh, you're, you want to limit it to up to 80?
Well, I want everybody to get one.
I know. Right, well, I mean, if you, right, so you want...
I mean, I don't know, what do you think, John, you, I, do we want to limit it, or do we just, you know, say...
Well, I'll tell you what, I mean, I will only purchase them as needed, but if you want to go and put a limit of 100 of them, in case we get an uptick because there's a greater need now?
If there's a crush, we can come back in front of the board again, yeah.
I can come back in December and say, oh my goodness, we've gone through them all?
So are we going to limit to 100, or are we just going to come back if we need more?
That's up to you, it's your motion.
Let's limit to 100, I think that's fair, and then if Supervisor Wilt sees a breach...
Yeah, I mean, I won't purchase 100 unless I see that we need them.
Okay.
But I have the authority then to go as many as 100.
To purchase those 100, and then if, you know, it's set in December if we need more?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second that motion Supervisor Wilt.
Okay, I have a motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Carol, to purchase up to 150 gift cards as a single holiday gift to our food pantry recipients, and half of them to be for Riverside Foods and half of them to be for Aldi, and so they, that people have their choice. Does that summarize it correctly?
Yes.
So I have a motion and second for that, and I will call a roll. Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilt says yes, so, thank you. And regarding the, some preliminary discussion of township tax levy, we do need to basically state what the intention is this month, because by next month, we will be trying to pass the levy, we need 20 days between that. I haven't got all the details of where the money will be, but I would propose, and I will move, I would propose that we approve the levy to be at the full 105% of last year's, and it's actually the extension of taxes. It's not the levy, but it is what the, what the county has calculated as the extension. That finally came out last week, we didn't have those numbers until now. So although our levy and Mental Health Board comes up and they give us their own, and I think that they are going to be looking for the maximum 105, 105%, that does not require a hearing, but I would propose we go to 105% of the extension, which for the town fund and the general assistance fund... town fund and the general assistance fund, that extension was $700,416.40. The mental health extension was an additional $683,606.50, and I anticipate that's what theirs will be, and that therefore I, the, I anticipate that the levy for the town fund and the general assistance fund will come to $735,437.30. And that would be, I will be adjusting where which items come from. I've been trying to get closer to how we actually spend our money, because for many years, we were simply adding so much percent to every line item, and that's not how we actually spend our money. Some things are pretty static and some things do increase, so. And then for the Mental Health Board, if we go at 105% of that, I will get you that right away. Their extension was $683,606. Multiply that by 1.05, so that, the mental health would be $717,786.83. Rounding up for a half point. So I will, I will be putting together the actual levy documents for approval at our next meeting.
And Supervisor Wilt, I did, after our conversation today, looked up the requirements, and the board should do a motion and a second to accept that estimate.
Okay.
And in light of the three persons here, hopefully everyone's good with that, but there should be a motion associated with it.
I'll make the motion, Supervisor Wilt, to accept that anticipated funds.
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the anticipated levy to go forward of $735,437.30 for the combined town and general assistance levy, and for the mental health levy, $717,786.83. That is based, as I said, on the extension. So we have a motion and a second, so we will, I will call the roll. Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilt, yes. So motion is carried to propose that and to present it in detail for approval at the December meeting.
And that satisfies what you need to do for tonight's purposes anyway on the tax levy, so.
Great. Thank you very much.
Sure.
So we are down to the warrants, and trustee Carol, will you present the warrants for approval?
Are you ready?
Yes.
Trustee Carol, me, myself and I, moved that the board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant dated November 2022 in the amount of $17,124.60 as presented to the board this ninth day of November 2022.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the general warrants. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Carol, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the general warrants for November 2022 in the amount of $17,124.60. And I will call the roll on that. Are there any questions or any discussion first? Hearing none, then trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt, yes. Motion is carried.
I will make a second motion, that the board ratify and authorize payment of the following amounts indicated on the following warrants. The first being the utility warrant dated November 2022 in the amount of $1,443.62. The payroll warrant dated November 2022 in the amount of $19,551.05. The health warrant dated November 2022 in the amount of $3,302.19. The general assistance warrant dated November 2022 in the amount of $7,272.89. The township radio players warrant dated November 2022 in the amount of $200. And the food pantry warrant dated November 2022 in the amount of $1,141.16. All of the above is presented to this board this day, the ninth day of November 2022.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Carol, seconded by trustee Clark. I will just, I wanted to explain one thing on the insurance warrant. There was an, there was a complication at the back office. You'll remember that we approved a change to our health insurance policy. This is actually, represents an overpayment and will be getting a credit because they billed us on the old plan, but then they made some errors in putting things, so we will be getting somewhat of a discount off of that. So the, I have a motion by trustee Carol, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the following warrants, all for November 2022. Utility warrant in the amount of $1,443.62. Payroll warrant in the amount of $19,551.05. Health warrant in the amount of $3,302.19. The general assistance warrant in the amount of $7,272.89. The township radio players warrant in the amount of $200. And the food pantry warrant in the amount of $1,141.16. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt, yes. Motion is carried. Thank you. And you have, of course, the general town fund and the general assistance fund financials for the first seven months of the year, so you can take a look at that. You can see that we are basically on track. Everything works, except that the funding has not been coming in, so. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Supervisor Wilt.
I have a motion by trustee Carol. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Trustee Clark seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried.